This is a test of the City of Palaca audio system. You're good.
It just takes forever on this thing.
Mr. Holmes, can you hear me?
I can.
I wanted to ask you how much would you like me to elaborate on these cases that they when they come up? The ordinances or is that just something that Sonny reads? Do I need to stand up and give a presentation?
Two of the ordinances as I recall are second readings so they shouldn't require a lot of explanation. Sonny will of course introduce the topic. If you want to give just a brief, you know very brief intro of of where the property is essentially by address. What the zoning request is and I guess if you have a recommendation or what the planning commission decision was then then other than that commission can ask you questions if they have if they have additional topics they want to cover or address. We are we are live now on YouTube Lisa and it is being recorded right now.
I understand, thank you.
Thank you.
So for those of you who can hear me, it appears we've lost internet connectivity and the acting city clerk is diligently trying to reestablish that at this, at this time. We're attempting to set up individual zoom links for the commissioners. And so they'll each zoom in if, if that's successful. Looks like a component absolutely failed. They were good to go and everything was transmitting and then it's not. So I see City Black here on one.
They've been here for a while.
The mayor, you can see, you've seen them, been able to see them.
No.
I think he's back up, Don.
Yeah, you can see the mayor now.
Okay, I think that's my laptop that Sonny has been, is working with, I believe.
And so at this time, we're going to call this meeting to order. Pass him over if you come forward.
You got, you got a dream on your phone? Just unmute back there. We're gonna have our, Pastor Moberly is gonna lead us in, in the flag.
Let your allegiance to the flag. What you stand, one nation.
Come board.
I want to thank you once again for this opportunity to be here to give you glory and praise, to give you honor. We look to you, we trust your name, we depend on your will and your way. Touch us now, bless us and touch us and bless us in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right, thank you, Pastor. Roll call, please. Just, I'll, I'll do it for here, so to save, for the sake of time. Commissioner Boreum. Commissioner McCaskill.
Here.
Commissioner Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Jones. Do we have Commissioner Jones on?
He appears to be on, but I'm.
And, and Terrell Hill. All members are present and accounted for. Just for the record, present in, present inside of City Hall in normal meeting place, our commissioners, Boreum, McCaskill, and Mayor Hill. For the purposes of today's meeting, it is at this time with the members present, um, so I'll entertain a motion so that our other two commissioners are able to participate virtually based on our ordinance and be able to vote and participate in our meetings for the, for the remainder of the day. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously. And this is for housekeeping purposes, so that we can make sure we've got a clear record. Commissioner Jones, can you hear me now? I can't hear. Can't hear you. Getting that feedback. Commissioner, can you mute for me? So we don't have feedback. Okay, has everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes from the June fourteenth, twenty twenty-one meeting, our special call meeting? Second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Commissioner Jones, I believe you got a lot of feedback coming in, so if you got three devices close, you can push back from one if it's. On mute one, cut the volume down. Also, the minutes from the June twenty-fourth, twenty, twenty-one meeting? Has everyone had an opportunity to just finish as well? There's a motion on the floor and a second. Is any further discussion on the motion? Commissioners, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I hear you knocking, Commissioner Jones. Any names? Motion carries. Moving on to public recognitions and presentations, we have a proclamation for today. And our proclamation for Pastor Carl Flag, fifty years and mi, it's his fiftieth year ministry anniversary day, July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one. Ms. Krantz, can you read the proclamation for me?
Whereas Pastor Reverend Carl Nathaniel Flag is celebrating his fiftieth anniversary in the ministry service, and whereas Reverend Flag is a lifelong resident of Placa and a product of the Putnam County School District, where he served as senior class president and was an honored graduate in nineteen seventy-seven. Pastor Flag furthered his education by earning an associate's of science degree in funeral service education from Miami Day College and a pastoral studies degree from New Orleans Baptist Theological Studies Juximo. And whereas Reverend Flag delivered his first sermon at the House of God Church in Placa at the tender age of eleven years old, under the leadership of the late elder Daniel G.A. Savage, Jr., on July twentieth, nineteen seventy-one. And whereas Reverend Flag became a licensed youth minister at the age of eleven, and whereas Reverend Flag was called to shepherd Mount Taber First Baptist Church in Placa, Florida, where he was installed as pastor on April seventh, nineteen ninety-one, and has served as pastor for the past thirty years. And whereas Reverend Flag is a licensed funeral director and embalmer and serves as president and chief executive officer of the Carl N. Flag Serenity Memorial Chapel, Inc. And whereas Reverend Flag is a true statesman, having been a public servant for over thirty years, he served as a Placa City Commissioner during nineteen ninety-nine, ninety, that, nineteen ninety to nineteen ninety-five, Placa Mayor during two thousand to two thousand and eleven, and Putnam County Commissioner, District Three, during twenty twelve to twenty thirteen. And whereas Reverend Flag is the current chaplain of the Putnam County Sheriff's Office and Board Chairman for the Putnam Community Medical Center, he has served numerous community organizations, including the Putnam County Chamber of Commerce, Putnam County Tourist Development Council, Putnam County Economic Development Council, Putnam County Development Authority, Rhoda Heaver Boys Ranch, Central Putnam Ministerial Association as past president, National Funeral Directors Association, Independent Funeral Directors of Florida, Director of Chaplains and Support Services, Putnam County Sheriff's Department, Volunteer Chaplain, Putnam Community Medical Center, Chaplain for the Florida Highway Patrol, Troop G, Chaplain for the Putnam County EMS, et cetera. And whereas Reverend Flag is a recipient of the Florida Governor Jeb Bush's Points of Light Award, as well as President George H.W. Bush's Point of Light Award, and whereas Reverend Flag is a proud husband, father of two daughters, and grandfather of two children. Now therefore, I, Terrell O. Hill, Mayor of the City of Placa, together with the members of the Placa City Commission, proclaim Sunday, July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one, as Pastor Reverend Carl N. Flag's fiftieth year anniversary, ministry anniversary day in the city of Placa. And we urge all citizens to celebrate and congratulate Pastor Flag upon the occasion of his fiftieth year of ministry service. And witness whereof, I adhere unto, set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the City of Placa this twenty-second day of July in the year of our Lord, two thousand and twenty-one.
Motion on the floor and a second for Commissioner Boreum. Is there any further discussion? See none questions call, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do we have Pastor Flag in the line?
Yes, sir. Good evening.
Pastor Flag, sorry for the technical difficulty, but we'd love to hear some words from you and congratulations on fifty years of ministry.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, City Administration, and all who have joined this evening's meeting. I am both humbled and honored to be recognized at a time such as this. My family, my wife, my daughters, son-in-law, grandson and granddaughter are all my number one cheerleading squad. I am so thankful that God has placed me in a community that I love and adore. I'm so grateful that we can mark this milestone in history. I'm not one to draw attention to myself, but I'm, I'm thankful that someone recognizes that my heart is in the quality of life enhancement for our community. So thank you for taking the time to mark this milestone in ministry. I have come too far from where I started from to stop now. I just thank God for my humble upbringing, through my parents, my mother, my father, my grandparents. I'm just grateful for those people who have surrounded me. I would be remiss not to mention all of those educators in my life who saw the best in me, who pushed me, who pressed me and, and caused me to do no less than excellent. And so thank you so much to my colleagues. Thank, thankful for all of the leaders throughout our community who are working through these most tenacious times. Thank you for being a friend of Flag and may God bless us all.
Thank you, Pastor. Any comments from the commission?
Although, I wish you can, Pastor Flag, for fifty years of dedicated service to ministry. Being the son of a PK, I know the time and dedication that it entails to be on the battlefield, fighting not only for the Lord, but for our community as well. And just to have known me, known, you know me all my life, and I've seen you walk the way that the Bible has laid out, and you have not wavered from doing so. And I know that you will continue to do so, so congratulations on behalf of my family to you. Thank you so much for what you're doing, what you are doing, what you will do for the upbuilding of God's kingdom.
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
Pastor Flag, this is Commissioner McCaskill. I want to personally thank you as well as your family, not only for what you've done for this community, but the impact and the things that you have done for me personally and my family. I just, I don't think that this time is, would do, do justice to say, to give you the thanks and the, and the congrats that you need and the recognition that you deserve as a leader in this community. I thank you for being my pastor, you know, spiritually, my spiritual leader, the community leader, the things that you have done, again, as Commissioner Campbell said, that you do, that you do now, you currently do and will do. Thank you so much and congratulations.
Thank you so much, Commissioner McCaskill.
Well, Pastor Flag, this is Commissioner Boreum, and again, I want to thank you for your dedication, your commitment and the sacrifices you have made for not only yourself, but your family, your community, and most of all, the commitment you made to God, to serve not only yourself, but you serve our entire community and beyond our community for your dedication and your commitment and for the fifty years of service you've provided to our community. I can't say enough about what you have done, so there's not enough words in the, in, in, what's the dictionary to explain or describe your, your work here on, on our, and your award. Be certainly in heaven. But you taking care of people, going while, while they're living, you taking, you take care of the people while they're living and you also take care of them when they, when they pass on. So you got three hundred and sixty degrees of taking care of people, one hundred and twenty, one hundred and twenty, one hundred and twenty-three, sixty. So your award will be in heaven. Thank you, sir, for all you've done and continue to do.
Thank you so much, sir.
Any other comments?
Reverend Flag? This is Commissioner Jones. And again, I want to thank you. I want to thank you for your years of service, your commitment to this community, the city of Placa, to all of our families that you have touched. And thank you for being a trailblazer, because it's obvious that you have reached all of us and touched our lives so that we wanted to make a difference in our community. I've already spoke to you personally, but I would be remiss not to do it publicly. And I thank you for all you have done and I continue to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jones.
So Pastor, I'll say the remainder of my comments, there's no need to echo the sentiments of this commission, but I want everyone in Zoom land to understand that I also asked Pastor Flag, I said, at the age of eleven, did you play Little League sports? Because I said, well, every while the rest of the kids are playing Little League sports, you were delivering the benediction and the, and the message for the day. And so that says a whole lot about you and your commitment to God, to this community. And so I'm just excited about these fifty years and we'll see you on Sunday at three. So for the, for the services as we continue for.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Next up will be public comments. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. There'll be no action taken on topic of discussion. Is there anyone here for public comment? You can use the YouTube chat function or you can dial three eight six, three two nine, zero one hundred, extension zero. Is there anyone here for public comment? At this time, we'll open up public comment. Is there anything in YouTube chat?
Not at this time.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close public comment. We'll move on to the consent agenda. On our consent agenda, we've got items A through N. Are there any items on the consent agenda that you wish to have removed at this time, Commissioner?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I hear you.
I would like item J, resolution number twenty-two-one, R eight-nine.
Okay. Are there any other items that we wish to have removed at this time?
Motion to accept all items on the consent agenda, A through N, with the exception of item J.
This is motion on the floor to accept minus J. Is there any further discussion? See none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Even those in Zoom land, I need a vote from you.
We did vote, Mayor.
I can't hear you.
Aye.
Thank you. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item, item J, adopt resolution number twenty-twenty-one, R eighty-nine, authorize an execution of an agreement with AACI Services Incorporated in the amount of twenty-eight thousand dollars for turf maintenance services at the Placa Riverfront Park. And this is a resolution of the City of Placa, Florida, awarding turf maintenance bid for AACI Services Incorporated in the amount of twenty-eight thousand dollars for turf maintenance services at the Placa Riverfront Park, providing prescriptions there, providing for effective data. Mr. Griffin, do you want to take this, do you want to take this, this item?
Yes, sir, I can give a, I guess, a brief overview. As you recall, you originally awarded this to Brightview Landscape Services in the amount of nineteen thousand dollars. However, Brightview declined to sign some necessary paperwork that we require, simply put, the E-Verify certification, which means that they certify that they check the eligibility of all of their employees to make sure that they are eligible to work in the United States of America. Since they declined, we could obviously not enter into a contract with them. And the next lowest, most qualified bidder was AACI Services.
Any question, Commissioner Jones, and are you full of this item?
Yes, yes, sir. The question I have is, I understood about the documentation with I nine complications. However, I wanted us to review, and I stated to the city manager, as well as Jonathan, our contract back with the Department of Corrections. They did that prior, and prior to us signing this contract or going on with the contract with, with this company, I would like for us to have a meeting with D O C in reference to them trying, us trying to actually patch our relationship and contract up with them, because I think that need to be revisited. And I've shared that, I shared that conversation with Mr. Griffin, and we just never got to sit back down and talk about it. And before we enter into agreement with another company, I would like for that to take place.
So was it, so was the river, the riverfront wasn't a part of the prison contract, was it? So was it, so was the river, the riverfront wasn't a part of the prison contract, was it? Mr. Griffin? Can you hear me? Hello?
Yeah, I apologize, Mayor, I muted myself. For the past couple of years, the riverfront was under contractual maintenance with AACI Services. But that award termed out, the prisoners did assist in the maintenance of the riverfront prior to that.
So who's currently maintaining the riverfront?
We're currently using AACI Services, but we can only authorize up to seven mows before we go over our procurement threshold.
And so we've got a meeting next week. I actually spoke to the warden on, on a different matter concerning the right of ways. I asked him would he be available to come in, I thought he was going to come in today and give some public comment on the right of ways. And then I spoke to his office, he said he'd be able to come in for next week's meeting and he'd be available to meet with the city manager, whoever else he would need to meet with to discuss where they were before. Before we get too far off topic on this particular discussion. Some of the information that was relayed to me seemed to be different from the information that I got from the warden. And it seemed as though the logical thing to do would be to have a conversation with them as it pertained to some of the other stuff. But for the purposes of, for the purposes of this item that we have on the agenda today. We're in discussion right now. To, and I, what's the pleasure of the commission as we move forward with this item, there's a motion on the floor currently.
Are there any issues that are related to the initial award as opposed to the, the, I guess, the paper was proper paperwork, not in time, and then you're getting, it's, it's award to the second bidder, little bit.
Okay, here's Commissioner.
What would change, what would change, what are we trying to solve, especially from some of the things?
You said, he's asking are there any, is, is the paperwork current, is the AACI paperwork proper and current? Which the answer to that, it's, it's yes. Their paperwork is proper and current. And the only difference is the variance in price based upon that and the fact that the prison was the last maintained, the last group to maintain the riverfront. And so that's where we are.
No, 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 I think Brightview was awarded initially, and my understanding was that Brightview did not, uh, control I nine, the way it was supposed to be.
Right.
So it's a part of the management's business.
Right.
So I'm, I'm disappointed that, that Commissioner Jones pulled it for that reason, did we say that why they not properly did and can you better?
Commissioner, Commissioner Jones's concern was, based on what I, what I, what I'm hearing is, his concern is that the award, that we're awarding the riverfront to AACI. After we got, after we discontinued the prison contracts. And that there may be some, there may be some understanding with the prison contracts that you think we should talk to the warden about?
Absolutely, if we, if we could salvage that relationship, because if you, if you, I mean, I'm quite sure we all have noticed the service level right now on the right of ways. And if we could sever, I mean salvage the relationship with the DOC and have them, and award them some of those contracts back at a lower rate as well, I must add. Because if I'm, if I stand to be corrected, that original contract was lower than twenty-eight thousand dollars. When we, when we voted to give it to the, the other company. So I, I don't have the notes in front of me right now, but I do know this. I know that I have also spoke with the warden at the prison and it just seems like it was some miscommunication. It's not that they don't, do not want to work for us in the capacity that they, they did in the past. And there were some issues in reference to COVID, excuse me, COVID and the governor's mandate that prevented them fulfilling the, the contract, not that they didn't want to. And just as if, as we have to reorganize the way we operate due to the fact of COVID, we have to reconsider it of the people we partner with as well. So they may, may couldn't have reached their deliverables at that time, but it was due to no fault of their own. So I think we should sit down and have that conversation before severing that relationship. Because it has been a good longstanding relationship in our community for some time. So that's my request at this time, that we table it until we meet with the, the, the warden at the prison and maybe we sit down and we kind of these things out.
And I totally understand what you, Commissioner Jones, you bring up some valid points as it relates to communication and everything. And while we're speaking about communication and Jonathan is here on, on and city attorney, city manager Holmes. I think if I'm not mistaken, did we not attempt to reach out to them on several occasions, communicate to them the force of services that they were providing and some missed services? And I think we're expecting a payment from them that we may not have, a few payments that we have not received. So from one of you all elaborate on that and share with us, please.
If I couldn't, Mr. Mayor, we're happy to reach out and speak with the prison system again. I will tell you that as of right now and as of our communications last week. Department of Transportation is not receiving any assistance from DOC. Putnam County is not receiving any assistance from DOC in terms of prison labor crews, at least that's the information we've been provided. We spoke with DOT, Department of Transportation last week as they asked us to assist them in some right of way issues. And at that time, they confirmed that they had zero prison crews available to them. We reached out to the county and were advised the same thing. Prior to this contract being terminated and obviously I rely on information I get from others and Jonathan is in, is on the, on the Zoom call to speak. But we were getting prison crews about thirty-nine percent of the time that they were scheduled to work, but we were paying a hundred percent of the contract. My, there's, it's been covered, there's been conversation that we didn't have any communication with the warden or the prison. I think Jonathan can speak directly to that. Matter of fact, the last word I had, they were not allowing any prison guards to leave the prison to supervise crews. But if all that's changed now, if they've decided to relax all that and they can fulfill the contract and start a, and start delivering at performance levels that, that we can tolerate. Then I, I think everyone at city staff would be tickled to death. But I would like Jonathan to speak briefly about the issue of our communication with the prison because it's been, it's kind of been alleged that we had no communication with them and Jonathan, can you speak to that?
Yes, of course, and first we did receive our refund, Commissioner McCaskill. We got approximately thirteen thousand eight hundred and twenty-six dollars back as a credit for non-performance. So we were very appreciative to DOC in Tallahassee as well as DOC here in East Palaca. But I will tell you, I personally spoke to the warden on numerous occasions. We both wished this could have gone a different route. I think everyone knows here that, you know, for the fifty-four to fifty-six thousand dollars that we pay per contract, we get approximately a three point five full-time equivalent. So we get a lot more for our dollar working with the Department of Corrections. And I, I think they did a great job, I think you could ask anybody down in Public Works and they'd tell you the same thing. And our guys are suffering for it right now. Like Mr. Holmes said, we would love the opportunity to sit down and, and talk to the warden and the prison DOC to see if, you know, they're in a different position. But when we last spoke to them, their hands were tied and they just could not fulfill their contractual obligations.
Then you advised me that the warden actually called you and apologized for not being able to fulfill?
Yes, sir, once we sent notice that we were terminating, the warden called and said, you know, I wish things would have worked out differently and wish we would have been able to actually, you know, send you some guys.
So we're having to check out and revisit if that's, which is of the commission. You know, there's been some communication about our mowing, aside from the fact that we've had a lot of rain and there's a lot of grass. Right now, previously at, at a point in time, you had three prison crews and two city crews mowing. You have no prison crews now and five people on staff at the city mowing. There are two vacancies. So, you know, it is a challenge to try to keep any kind of schedule. If the prison crews could be available again and be dependable, it'd be a huge thing for us. And there's no one that I know of at city staff that's, that's against that. So if, if the warden is telling someone that now they can fulfill the contract, we're tickled to death to meet with them.
So, so two things, outside of, outside of the numbers that we have mowing right now, sticking to this mowing concept. What have we done since we cut the prison crews to try to attract more, more staff to deal with the issues that we have in place? Outside of just normal advertising the job? Have we had a job fair, have we hired on site, have we, have we reached out to the retirees to try to see if we can get people in? Because if you cut three prison crews, then you got to try to replace three prison crews. Did we advertise and try to get our contract folks to cut, what did we do?
We attempted to look at the, we have a list, an inventory of properties to be mowed. The effort was made to determine what we could most efficiently accomplish by contract and we let those contracts. You were to approve one tonight on the riverfront, there was already one on the cemeteries. And then as I indicated, yes, we actively try to solicit employees. We can have a job fair, but I mean, we're, we're soliciting employees. We have two potential applicants right now, it's my understanding, but it's just been tough to hire. And we're not the only ones experiencing that, if you watch TV or you read the newspaper, you see that everyone is having a difficult time in attracting labor. Or has had a difficult time attracting labor, but you know, if you want us to approach it a different way, we can have a job fair, we can, we can do a number of different things. But I don't think there's been any reluctance on our part to hire or procure services, it's just been difficult to acquire. But we're happy to sit out with the warden whenever, next, next week whenever, if he thinks he can deliver now, if they are allowed to let guards leave the prison. We were offered the best of my knowledge, then can relate to me was, we could have our people monitor prisoners on a one to two ratio. Well, that's basically asking our people to perform a function they really didn't sign on for and your multiplier is only one. Because we take up type one of our people for two of theirs and gain one. And that was, that was at, at that point in time deemed not, not as successful or a, an efficient way to move forward. We actually save money, as I understand, on the contract labor from what we have with the prison. Jonathan, you may want to expound on that.
I don't need him to expound any longer. What I need for me is, I need us to understand that one, if the warden reached out and said he could train employee, he could train employees to go over and take inmates. We got some employees who've already been previously trained under previous warden to take employees. And the, the reality of it is, if he could bring two inmates out for one employee, that's more than just one employee going out mowing by himself. And so at the end of the day, no effort or inaction is no better than no action. And so at some point, there's got to be a solution to the problem. If you lose fifteen inmates, at some point, you got to replace them with some number of people or some number of contracts. We haven't done either, there needs to be some answers to that question that come up real fast with more than just direction from the commission. It needs to be something that's done in-house so that we can deal with those labor issues that are out there. And on the other side of it, in speaking with the warden, I think there is some variance in the conversation that is taking place. But at the end of the day, it's all water under the bridge and we need to figure out how to get to a point where there's a solution because the city looks like crap. And that's just the reality of what it is. And we can sit and talk until our mouth starts to fry chicken. If we don't get to a point where we start to resolve the issue, the grass is going to be six feet tall all over town. And we're going to still be talking about there's not enough people to carry it out, so we got to get it done. And that's the bottom line, that's where I am. The warden will be here, he's willing to sit down and talk to management to see if we can come up with a solution. By the time we come back to the meeting on Thursday, I want us to at least see if we looked at some viable options so that we can bring something back to this commission.
So first of all, I want to say, say thanks that we received a payment, I thank you for our opinion on that information, Jonathan. And I, I really don't have much more to say and I guess Commissioner Borom had something to say, but I, we just need to make a decision whether or not we're going to pay for this thing or, or going to no contract.
Frankly, I think I'm confused as it relates to revisiting, yes, I thought we made a unanimous vote from the commission when we chose to do away with using prison labor. Period, I thought that's what we voted on. In addition to the contractual non-performance and that was the second piece of it. And by, again, what, in terms of the contract, I see nineteen thousand as opposed to twenty-eight thousand, you got nine thousand dollars different. We need the, the services, we, 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 we're still ahead of the game if we got nine, thirteen thousand dollars back as a refund. So I think we'll moving forward and we can rekindle or reestablish that relationship going forward. Because how do we deal with that contractual performance deal when we've had a previous issue with DOC? And then I think the commission voted unanimously because we talked about the amendment thirteen in terms of. So I don't, I don't know if we need to go back and revisit utilizing prison labor for the benefit of the city. I, I think we, we'll be, we'll be speaking out of both sides of our mouth.
And I'll tell you, I'm not, I'm not a proponent of prison labor, but I'm a proponent of truth. And at the end of the day, only thing I want is for all the information to be shared by everybody at the baseline. And I don't like the fact that people have conversations with me and I don't feel like I've gotten the whole story. I feel like I've got ninety-nine percent or eighty-five percent of the story. Give me all of it and let me make a decision based upon what's in place. And when I look at our city right now, it looks far different than it did a few months ago, even with thirty-nine percent performance. And the only thing I want to do is if we're going to sever a relationship with anybody, then I want us to be able to have a real one-hundred percent conversation about what's in place. So at the end of the day, if that's our decision, this commission's made a fully informed decision. It's not about going back, I've, I've never been informed in, in favor of prison labor. But I'm not in favor of ending the contract on bad terms as well, particularly with an organization that we want to keep a positive relationship with. And so that's where I am. As far as this motion is concerned, my belief is there's a, there's a now as it relates to the riverfront. It needs to be cut and maintained now. As far as it relates to the right of ways, we've got to come up with some alternatives as to what we start to do with some of these other properties. And I believe that on the motion that exists right now, my, you know, my position is we need to go ahead and pass this and we need to address and look at ways to deal with the rest of that stuff as we come to our next meeting next week. Is there any further discussion on this motion?
I, I would like to just clarify this for Commissioner Borom and whatever the favor of the commission is, I'm okay with it. Commissioner Borom, I received a phone call from the warden at East Palaca Department of Corrections stating that they wish they would have had an opportunity to talk about this. Prior to them just reading it in the paper that the contract was terminated. So that sparked the, the re revision of this, where we got to revisit it and find out exactly where, where did we have a disconnect? So I think that's the, that's the way we need to do business. I don't, I mean, the, the way the city looks is important to me as well as all of you guys. If you, if you feel that we need to go on with this, and you brought it out yourself, that the numbers are different than what the first bid was. So when things like that happen and then you see it come up for, to be voted on again today and the numbers don't match. Okay, we need, we need to start doing a little more deep dive on these things and I'm going to let it go with that.
Commissioner, I, I wasn't, I wasn't critical to having a conversation with the warden, I mean, the warden may have talked to other commissioners and the mayor behind the scenes. I'm a little bit lost and so I thought we had voted on, we put it to sleep and I thought we had moved forward, but it has resurfaced and so now I'm, I'm getting a little bit confused, that's my, that's my concern.
This is Commissioner McCaskill and actually you are right, we did have a meeting and we voted on it. I however, I am in favor of transparency. And I don't think it'll do us any harm if we go ahead and reach out and table this item so that we can clear up the transparency, clear the communication. And we don't have to go back and forth about who said what. and we don't have to go back and forth about who said what. Okay? So that's my position on this.
And that's the motion to, uh, table it is...
You gotta withdraw the first motion.
Okay. Who makes the mo- I make the motion?
There's a, there's a motion to take...
So there's a motion to table by Commissioner Borum?
I second.
After the, uh, communication with the warden, it's, it's passed.
Second by Commissioner Jones to table. Uh, is there any further discussion? All, questions, all in favor, say aye. Second to Commissioner Jones. All in favor, say aye. Propose, motion carries unanimously. We're out of consent, we move on to the front part of our meeting. Now, next up, public hearing. Under our public hearing, we got item A, which is adopt resolution number twenty-twenty-one R eighty-four, to consider adoption of twenty-twenty-one fire assessment rate, to fund the fire protection services with no change in the rate of assessment from twenty-twenty rate, and memorializing staff direction. Mr., also, just for the record, we've got Mark Lawson here with us.
Resolution of the City, Commission of the City of Polacka, Florida, approving the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two non-ad miller taxes assessment role for the fire protection services, facilities and programs directing certification of the assessment role and collection pursuant to the Uniform Assessment Collection Act, confirming required statutory notice and imposing and levying fire assessments, providing directions, providing an effective date, providing for scrivenor shares.
All right, no more, no more telephone. Let me go with that again. Can we have it in place? Resolution City of Polacka, Florida, approving the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one non-ad miller assessment role for fire protection services, facilities, and programs directing certification of assessment and roles collection pursuant to the Uniform Assessment Collection Act. Hold on. All right, now we're open the floor. We got a question for the floor in a second. Open the floor for public hearing, is there anyone here for public hearing? Ain't no one here for public hearing. At this time, is there anything in the YouTube chat?
What was time, Mayor?
There's nothing in the YouTube chat. We'll now close public hearing. Any further discussion from the commission? Sing that, all in favor, say aye.
Hey, Mayor.
Excuse me?
Ma- Mayor Hill.
Anyone oppose?
Commissioner Jones here.
You oppose?
Aye. Aye, oppose.
You're opposed. All right, Commissioner Jones opposed, motion passes four to one. Moving on to item B, adopt resolution number twenty-twenty-one R ninety-five, electing to timely preserve the use of the uniform method of collecting non-ad miller assessments levied in all parts of the city of Polacka for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, beginning October first, twenty-twenty-two, stating a need for such levy. Let me read that, this transcript, I think they won't be able to hear you this sound. The resident city of Polacka, Florida, resident of the city commission of the city of Polacka, Florida, approving the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two non-ad miller assessment role for fire protection services, facilities and programs directing certification of the assessment role and collection pursuant to the Uniform Assessment Collection Act, confirming required statutory notice and imposing and levying fire service assessment, providing directions, providing an effective date, and providing for scrivenor shares. Be resolved by the city commission of the city of Polacka, Florida. I entertain a motion at this time. There on B, we just did a statement. They're backwards. Come on. All right. Let me see, B. They're, they're backwards in my book. All right, let me read this caption again. Resident for the city of Polacka City Commission, resident for the city commission of the city of Polacka, Florida, electing to timely preserve the use of the uniform method of collection non-ad miller assessments levied in all or part of the city of Polacka, Florida for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, beginning October first, twenty-twenty-two, stating a need for such levy, providing for a timely milling of this resolution as provided by general law, providing an effective date, and providing for scrivenor shares. I entertain a motion. Yes, B. So the motion on the floor in a second. We're now open the floor for public hearing. Is anyone here for public hearing? You can also use the YouTube chat function.
Not at this time, Mayor.
Or you can dial three eight six three two nine zero one hundred, extension zero. Is there anything in the YouTube chat?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
Ain't no one here for public hearing. We'll close public hearings. Is there any further discussion from the commission? All in favor, say aye. Oppose? No opposition, motion passes unanimously. Next up is our trim calendar, adopt resolution number twenty-twenty-one R ninety-six, setting the tentative millage rate for twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two budget year seven point four mills proposed. Ms. Shank, are you on the phone?
I am, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, so I have provided a supplementary document, um, to Sunny. Sunny, are you able to put that up on the screen so that the commission can see that item?
I don't think we're gonna get anyone on the screen.
Okay, um, so...
Share screen? You can share your screen. We've got some technology challenges on this end.
Can you see my screen?
We see your screen.
Okay. So, um, first thing that I want you to take a look at is the historical millage for the city of Polacka. As you can see, since FY two thousand seventeen, we have remained at a flat millage of six point four. Dating back to FY two thousand sixteen, we were at six point nine nine six seven. And then at two thousand fifteen, we were at nine point one seven four nine. The reason for the drop in our millage was due to the fire assessment being adopted within that fiscal year. Currently, if you take a look at the millage breakdown, a tenth of a mil is equal to a little under forty-five thousand. So it is forty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty dollars to be exact. So if the commission wishes to adopt a flat tentative millage, you have a hundred and sixty-three thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars of new revenue coming in. The proposed millage that I am putting forth is at seven point four, which would generate an additional six hundred and eleven, six hundred and sixteen dollars. This is the maximum tentative millage. So if the commission wishes to adopt a lower millage in September at our first public hearing, which is when we would propose that item, you may do so. However, if you lock in at six point four during this timeframe and decide that you would need additional revenue for general fund before then through the next commission workshops, um, and items that'll be discussed, then you would have to go into your reserves. So right now you do have a healthy reserve, it's thirty-four percent. However, like I said, if you are to not increase the millage, you're going to need to dip into your reserves. Does, any of the, does the, any of the commissioners have any questions as far as what the mil breakdown is that you're looking at in front of you or how the adoption process goes with adopting the tentative millage?
And just for the record, the, the minimum recommended reserve is fifteen percent?
Correct, yes. That is best practice.
Okay. I agree. Any, um, any questions from the commission? Any comments from the commission?
Um, well, I, I could have concerns about even raising it to, uh, that degree or whatever. I mean, I think we have a lot of work to do, we'll turn it a half. I mean, we, six point four and the two point four six, I mean, we have increased our, uh, funding levels. Uh, part of it is in six, um, twenty fifteen. And I think we got money that we maybe not realize that we have in terms of looking at our budget in a little bit more magnified way as I, I think. Because happening, just, unless we could do it in a way where it's something within a year, but I don't want, I wouldn't want to put that on the taxpayers in terms of adding a whole bill to our taxpayers at four hundred and some more thousand dollars. And, uh, and the reason I say that is because some, some our taxpayer right now, they just, you know, they, they don't feel like they're getting services that they, uh, are due. And, uh, I do know our staff need, well, we need to, yeah, increasing their wages, that, that's for sure. Um, there's no time to do a special assessment, in my opinion, because that has to be put forth a year in advance at least. But I think there's ways that we can get, when we see a hundred and sixty-two thousand new money. Uh, we have the golf course as well as the, uh, airport coming out in twenty-twenty-three and, and voted over the right around three hundred and some thousand dollars, near three hundred and some thousand dollars. So we're looking at at least five hundred to six hundred thousand dollars. Money hasn't been available from date, uh, that we're, we're coming in now. We got another year to pay that off. And so I don't, I mean, if you pass this measure, I think that'll be common. I don't see what we just turn back out. We, we have not turned it off, I don't see that yet. So I think adding that would really hurt. I would have to do a thing to that, that's my comment.
Sure, and, and like I said, Commissioner Borum, you do have the option to reduce the millage. And if the commission wishes, we can adopt a tentative millage that is within a more reasonable level. For instance, if you and the commission decide that they would like to adopt the tentative millage at six point nine mills, um, that just locks you in that that is the maximum that you could do. Potentially through the workshops, if you decide to make budget cuts or, um, reduce specific things, you could potentially keep your six point four flat mil. It's just giving you that leverage of, of the maximum. It's setting the maximum for you by statute.
Oh, I, I understand that very, very clearly, but, uh, I would only, I would only look at that if, if it was a way for the sunset. I mean, that's just not provisional.
Any other comments from the commission?
And I'm a little bit concerned with the sunset because we don't know, looking ahead, if we get to a, a point, we don't know. And we, and I understand that we can put it in if they sunset, but we don't know what, what happened with everything going on. And I'm just concerned about moving in moderation.
Any other comments? Okay. Anything else, Commissioner? McCaskey?
No, I can hear.
And could you, could you get, did y'all hear Commissioner McCaskey?
I could, yes. Um, I will say that you cannot put a sunset provision on your tentative millage because it is something that you formally adopt every year. So if you were to adopt a six point seven percent millage, or sorry, six point seven mil, and then next year decide that you wanna go back down to six mills, you can do so. Um, that's completely up to your pleasure and your vote. It's just something that's done annually, so it's not verbiage that you would write in that it would sunset.
Commissioner Jones or Campbell, you got any comments?
I have no comments.
I couldn't hear, who was that, Jones or Campbell? Ms. Jones? Commissioner Campbell, you got anything?
No, sir, I have nothing.
No, sir, I don't. Okay. And just, and I, I'll give my comments briefly, and I've had a conversation with Ms. Shank as well. Um, I, I think the concern in, in why the millage proposal, the tentative millage was proposed to be raised to seven point four is based upon, uh, the fact that we got the vote coming in, the second vote coming in. Uh, we've got the, the results of the salary study coming in. Also, we've got, um, potentially what could end up being the Central Academy campus, um, coming in as well. However, in, in the numbers run about six hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars. Uh, and I, and I told her, I said, you know, um, one of the things that I, I'm concerned with is, we made a commitment, we, we made fire assessment, and we put fire assessment in place, we made a commitment to the citizens that we will make our best efforts not to raise taxes anymore. Because I, I feel that the citizens carry a significant weight with what we've got in place. Um, and we've done a heck of a lot better from where we were, having five point nine, nine five percent of our reserves unrestricted back in, you know, back in two thousand and fifteen, sixteen, when we put this stuff in place. Um, I feel comfortable, um, with our reserves going to the six point nine nine that we started out with with fire assessment for our tentative millage. And, and I can't say that I would vote conclusively in September for a millage increase. I think that we've got some other tools in our toolbox that can get us to where we are without necessarily passing on us, on the, on the citizens. Uh, we've got dollar rental properties that are in excess of what we're trying to raise from millage, the six hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, that we basically give away for nothing. And we've got other revenue streams that are there. I think the other piece of it is, we're at thirty-four percent reserves. At one point, we're on the verge of bankruptcy. While thirty-four percent isn't, um, you know, isn't a lot of money when you've got a, a small general fund as we have, but there's also a significant, um, amount of building and a significant amount of growth that's coming to this community in ways that we haven't seen in a number of years. I, I wholeheartedly believe that it's okay for us to set the tentative millage, um, at a rate of six point nine nine, and then we can have real discussions about what are our options to generate revenue as we pass the final budget. But my full opinion is that I just don't think we should raise our taxes at this point. Because every year we're getting healthier. And if we're getting healthier every year, at some point, we could try to make our cities, citizens healthier every year. And I, I just don't believe that, uh, as good as fire assessment has been for us from the standpoint of creating vitality within the city and, and even some stability, that it lends to us really pushing forward with adding additional burden, uh, to the folks who've been carrying the load. I think if anything, we look at where we are in our fifty percent and all the other things that we're giving discounts on, and we start to look at, you know, do we need to look at what we're doing, uh, as far as some of the reductions that are in place? But I think the real answer is, we've got an increase in property values coming consistently. Um, we've got a lot of properties that aren't getting the highest and best use. And there may be an opportunity for us to generate that capital from places other than where we are. So that's my thought process on the issue. I appreciate the work that staff has done in bringing the proposal to us. Because at the end of the day, they've got to bring to us, um, what they believe is the be- what's best for the city. And I think ultimately, we have to make a decision as to whether, um, our view matches their view or if there's, or if it doesn't, that's fine. And, and sometimes there's a middle ground. And so I think six nine nine for a tentative millage is a middle ground as we begin to go through our budget workshops and talk about setting our final millage. Any additional comments based on what I said? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Ms. Cranchis, is there? But, well, I don't know, we haven't had a motion yet.
Correct. Um, once the commission votes and, um, closes a millage layer, I will... Correct. Um, once the commission votes and, um, poses a millage layer, I will, I'll take the resolution.
Okay. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion from the commission as to where we are.
Honorable Mayor, I didn't hear that last statement.
She has a, she's got alternative resolutions based upon what the commission has in place. She can change the, she can change the numbers on the resolutions so that they match whatever we set our millage at. And so, um, she's saying that based upon what the commission's vote is, she'll place the other resolution on the screen.
Okay. Um, I would like to say one thing. As, as far as the mil- millage rate, uh, being set a little higher, an error on the side of caution, uh, based upon the, the, uh, salary survey coming in, and it's not in right now, so that's information we don't have. And, uh, as you said, the, the new facilities that we just tuck on, and, uh, we still got law maintenance and stuff that may become a factor here, uh, in the very near future. I, I, I also agree that we could, uh, err on the side of caution by, uh, going with her recommendation, and then later, we always can bring it down. We do have that window that we can bring it down. But if we set it too low, you know, we're going to be stuck there. We, we are not going to be able to raise it. So, um, I, right now, I, I, I don't mind, uh, right now, I would like the, the, the motion to actually accept her recommendation, knowing that week later, we're after we get all the other budget information, uh, handed to us in our budget, budget workshop.
So there's a motion on the floor to set the tentative millage at seven point four with the rollback rate of five point four three five six. Is there any discussion on the motion? I've got a comment, and I, and I want to make sure that I let this point be known. I wholeheartedly agree with Commissioner Borum and Commissioner McCaskill. Uh, although we set the millage on a regular basis, if there's any increase, and I, I, I can't sit and tell you today that I'm going to vote for an increase because I gave my word that we wouldn't increase it. Once we, once we instituted fire assessment, I'm going to stick to that. But I can say that if we increase it, I wholeheartedly don't believe it should be for more than a fiscal year. But that's something, um, that this commission has to do because I just don't think that increasing, uh, that continually increasing our millage rate is healthy for this community. We've seen it before when the, when the millage rate went to nine point one seven four mills, and we're almost maxed out. So we ended up in a position bringing fire assessment in as a way to bring a level of relief. And it's work, but I don't want us to get in the habit of relying on that. We've got to look at, we've got to stop and think methodically of how we increase positions. We've got to look at how we're spending. We've got to look at job descriptions and how we find ways to make sure that we're getting the most bring for our buck. And we've got, and, and we can't spend money like we got a slush fund. So, um, I just think that's where we are, and I think being fiscally responsible is going to be critical to us as we move forward. Uh, we've got more money in reserves than we've had in a number of years. But at the end of the day, with the amount of capital projects that we inherited, there's still a lot of work to be done. So that's my comment. Any other discussion on this motion? Was there, did we get a sec, who made the second? Nobody. Is there a second? Is there a second on this motion? Seeing no second, motion dies for lack of a second. Is there an additional motion at this time? Not everybody at once. No motion at this time?
Nothing at this time.
All right. I'm going to pass the gavel to Commissioner Borum. I'll make the motion at this time. I'll relinquish the chair. I move that we set the tentative millage at six point nine nine mil with a rollback rate of five point four three six mils for as proposed, as, as proposed in the resolution that we have before us right now for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. That's my motion.
I was trying to make the motion, but I'll second.
Commissioner Campbell?
All question.
All, all in favor?
Uh, he says all in favor. I call the question. Commissioner, Commissioner Borum says all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, Commissioner Allen?
We're going to roll call. Commissioner Jones, what's your vote?
Nay.
No from Commissioner Jones?
Commissioner Campbell?
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Yes from Commissioner Campbell?
Commissioner McCaskill, nay.
Nay from Commissioner McCaskill?
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Navy Commissioner Borum. Motion fail, three to.
Motion fail. Taking the gavel back, I'll entertain the third motion. Is there another motion on the floor? Well, the one thing you don't have the luxury of doing is not, is not setting millage.
Yeah, um, actually, Mayor, I was just about to speak to that. So by statute, we have to adopt a tentative millage by August the fourth. So if the commission does not vote on this item and lets it die tonight, we will have to call an additional special city commission meeting, um, to get this item adopted.
We got another meeting on the twenty-ninth already set. It's canceled. Budget workshop's set on the twenty-ninth, so we'll, we'll be in then.
But it would have to be a public hearing, Mayor.
Yeah, I understand. We're going, we're going to do this tonight. We're going to stay here until we get this done. Somebody's going, so I'll entertain a motion from somebody to adopt the millage rate. If it's a tentative millage, it'll be reviewed and discussed again as we pass the, the final budget before September thirtieth. So will somebody please? So seven four and six nine nine have failed. Is there any other number that you're happy with for a tentative millage at this point that someone wishes to put in the form of a motion?
I'm going to reshare my screen, um, so that the commission is able to see the mill breakdown. Once again, I do want to note, as we said, at this time, you are able to reduce it. This is the maximum.
Okay. Okay. We, I'm waiting for someone to make a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that we set it to be flat, and we look into what we have in our budget, and we will be fine with it.
There's a motion from Commissioner Borum to, to remain where we are at six point four mils. It's a second by Commissioner McCaskill. Is there any further discussion on this motion? Seeing none. Roll call. Commissioner Jones? Commissioner Jones?
Yay.
Yes for Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Campbell? No for Commissioner Campbell. Commissioner Borum?
Yes.
Yes for Commissioner Borum. Commissioner McCaskill?
Yes.
Yes, Commissioner McCaskill, Commissioner McCaskill. No for me. Motion passes three to two. Tendinitive millage will be set at six point four mils. Thank you again, Ms. Schenk, for providing us with, with some long debate and thought. And actually, that's not a bad thing because where we set our millage rate at has a lot to do with how we impact our citizens. And so at this point, we'll look at viable options for revenue generation as we continue along. So we appreciate that. At this time, uh, Mr. Law, Mr. Lawson, I know you got a long trip back to Tallahassee, and we appreciate you coming to visit the Last Truce Knocksout of Old Florida and the gem of the St. John's River. And so we want you to have safe travel on your way back.
Thank you, and my services and my, uh, skills will continue, and I will hope to assist you as you go forward with your troubled waters. It's been a pleasure to work with you for several years, and, uh, where there is a challenge, there's opportunity.
We appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up? Item number six D, public hearing. Give me one second. Let me, before I get there, I've got the walkers who've been here for a while. I'm going to take an item out of order. Public hearing, item number six E. An ordinance annexing approximately point four six acre property into the city, into the city of Menne and Future Land Use Map from Putnam County Urban Reserve, U R, to City of Palaca Residential Multi-Family, R M, and rezoning, Putnam County I, to residential single-family, R one A, City of Palaca, Case P B twenty-one dash zero five. Applicants, owners Kenneth and Sharon Walker, second reading. Yeah, fireworks, fire thing. We're dead. We're dead. We're going to proceed on, we'll proceed on with that. Okay. An ordinance to the City of Palaca, Florida, annexing to corporate city limits. There's a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Motion on the floor, second by Commissioner McCaskill. Now, open the floor for public hearing. Is there anyone here for public hearing? Three two nine zero one hundred, extension zero, YouTube chat, or you can fill out your yellow speaker's card. Do you have anything in YouTube chat? Hearing in YouTube chat, we vote on the comment at this time. Is any further discussion from the commission? Hello?
Question.
Question called by Commissioner Campbell. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion carries unanimously. Moving on. To item B, rezoning. There's a motion on the floor and a second. We're now on the floor for public hearing. I've got the walkers here. You have any comments you want to make? I've got no comments from the walkers at this time. Is there anyone else here for public comment at this time? Three eight six three two nine zero one hundred, extension zero, or you use the YouTube chat function? Do we have anything in YouTube chat?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
All right. Seeing nothing else, we'll close. Public comment. Is there any further discussion from the commission?
Question.
Uh, I thought you seconded it.
Um, I'm going to move, and I'll say it, but it's over.
Okay. So motion on the floor, the second by Commissioner McCaskill. Is there any further discussion from the commission at this time? Questions called. Did you call a question?
Yes, I called a question.
Questions called. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. That's it. Everything's adopted. Thank you very much. Moving on to public hearing, item six D on the agenda, annexing point zero seven acres of property into the City of Palaca, Menne and Future Land Use Map from Putnam County Urban Ser, Reserve to City of Palaca Residential Light. That's just what it says. It says City of Palaca Residential Light, R L, and the rezon, Putnam County Residential, R one A to R one, to R one A to R one A Single Family Residential District, City of Palaca, P B twenty-one dash zero four, applicant Toplin McGowan, owner, A and M Home Builders. Going to go ahead and read them. First item, item A is annexation ordinance twenty-one dash ten, second reading. There's a motion on the floor, the second by Commissioner McCaskill. We're now on the floor for public hearing. Is anyone here for public hearing? Sixty-nine one, we'll close public hearing. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item six F, public hearing. Ordinance annexing point five zero acre property in the City of Palaca, Menne and Future Land Use Map from Putnam County Industrial I H to City of Palaca Commercial, C O M, and rezoning to Putnam County Industrial Heavy I H to City of Palaca C two Commercial Intensive, Case P B twenty-five, location Putnam County, Property Appraisers, Parsha, thirty-seven, that, zero nine, two six, zero zero, zero zero, zero one, zero zero, zero zero, two zero. Applicant Beckstone Properties, first reading.
...
Per residential, official records, twelve forty-one, page two fifty-four, X, OR twelve eighty-eight, page six seventy-five, subject to easement, OR, one, three, three zero, um, CP one four, three five, one four four one, map sheet thirty-seven eight, contiguous to the boundaries of the City of Palaca, providing for scrip or there is, and providing for an effective date.
There's a motion on the floor, and a second, now open the floor for public hearing, is there anyone here for public hearing, through all three functions, YouTube, three eight six three two nine zero one hundred, or in public? Is there anything in YouTube?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
We're now close public hearing, is there any further discussion on the motion?
Question.
All in, questions called, all in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously, moving on to item B, future land use map, future land use amendment ordinance, twenty-one dash twenty.
Um, an ordinance to the City of Palaca, Florida, providing the future land use map of the adopted comprehensive plan, be amended with respect to the following parcel of land, less than ten acres in size, from the Putnam County Industrial IH to City of Palaca City Commercial COM, for the following property. Putnam County Property Appraisers, parcel number thirty-seven oh nine twenty-six four zeros, zero one hundred, zero three two zero, Denmos to Bourbon Farms, map book two, page thirty-nine, part of lots twelve and thirteen, official records, two forty-one, page six ninety-one, ex, um, official records, eleven eighty-four, page three ten, also part of closed sold highway fourteen fifteen, per red, official records, twelve forty-one, page two fifty-four, official records, twelve eighty-eight, page six seventy-five, subject to easement, official records, thirteen thirty, page, page, page fourteen thirty-five, fourteen forty-one, map of sheet thirty-seven eight, contiguous to the boundaries of the City of Palaca, Florida, providing for scrip or there is, and providing for an effective date.
On the floor, and a second, is there anyone here for public hearing, through all three options? Is there anything in YouTube chat?
Not at this time, Mayor.
We'll close public hearing, is there any further discussion, all in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously, moving on to rezoning ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-one.
An ordinance to the City of Palaca, Florida, providing the official zoning map of the City of Palaca, Florida, be amended from Putnam County Industrial Heavy IH to City of Palaca C2 Commercial Intensive for the following property. Putnam County Property Appraisers, parcel number thirty-seven oh nine twenty-six four zeros, zero one hundred, zero three two zero, Denmos to Bourbon Farms, map book two, page thirty-nine, part of lots twelve and thirteen, official records, two forty-one, page six ninety-one, um, X, official records, eleven eighty-four, page three ten, also part of the closed sold highway fifteen, per red, official records, twelve forty-one, page two fifty-four, X, official records, twelve eighty-eight, page six seventy-five, subject to easement, official records, book thirteen thirty, page fourteen thirty-five, fourteen forty-one, map sheet thirty-seven eight, providing for severability, providing for scrip or there is, and providing for an effective date.
Motion on the floor, and a second, now open the floor for public hearing, is there anyone here for public hearing, use all three functions? Is there anything in YouTube chat?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Here, is there any further discussion from the commission? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to item number nine, public hearing ordinance annexing four point zero five acres, three point eight oh acres of property into the city, item eight, annexation ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-two.
An ordinance to the City of Palaca, Florida, annexing into the corporate limits of the City of Palaca, Florida, certain adjacent territory identified as thirty nineteen Building Avenue, Palaca, Florida, three two one seven seven, Jackson subdivision, DBY, page forty-eight, lots six and seven, um, X, book two twenty-eight, page one fifty-two, plus official records, three thirty-three, page four ninety, and thirty twenty Building Avenue, Palaca, Florida, three two one seven seven, Simpson map book one, page one one four, block two, part of lots one through eight, including official records, two twenty-three, page four sixty, plus fifty feet of lots four and five, part of closed third street, OR two thirty-nine, page six sixty, blocks three, lots one, two, seven, and eight, and the E twenty-five feet of lots three and six, contiguous to the boundaries of the City of Palaca, Florida, and providing for scrip or there is, and providing for an effective date.
There's a motion on the floor, and a second, by Commissioner Borum, now open the floor for public hearing, is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing, is there any further discussion on the motion at this time? All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously, moving on to item B. Item B, future land use map amendment ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-three, for adoption. Let me do it. I got you, an ordinance to the City of Palaca, Florida, providing the future land use map for the adopted comprehensive plan, be amended with respect to the following parcel of land, less than ten acres in size, from Putnam County Urban Services, US, to City of Palaca Industrial IND, for the following property, thirty nineteen Building Avenue, Palaca, Florida, three two one seven seven, Jackson subdivision, DBV, P forty-eight, lot six and seven, EX, uh, book two twenty-eight, page one fifty-two, OR three thirty-three, page four ninety-seven, and thirty twenty-two Building Avenue, Palaca, Florida, three two one seven seven, Simpson map book one, page one fourteen, block two, part of lots one through eight, including OR two twenty-three, page four oh six, with fifty feet of the lots four and five, part of closed third street, OR two thirty-nine, page six sixty, blocks three, lots one, two, seven, and eight, and the E twenty-five feet of lots three and six, contiguous to the boundaries of the City of Palaca, Florida, and providing for scrip or there is, and providing for an effective date.
One, Mayor, motion to approve, uh, correct, I don't know, I think the mayor mentioned page four ninety-seven, well, he takes four ninety, so I'll approve it, with, uh, page forty-nine, I think he said, four ninety-seven.
I said scrip or there is, I meant. There's motion to, motion to approve. And a second. Now open the floor for public hearing, is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing at this time, is there any further discussion from the commission? All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously, moving on to rezoning ordinance twenty-one dash twenty-four. I got you, I'll give you a break.
An ordinance to the City of Palaca, Florida, providing the official zoning map of the City of Palaca, Florida, be amended from Putnam County Industrial, to the City of Palaca, White industrial, for the following property, thirty nineteen Building Avenue, Palaca, Florida, three two one seven seven, Jackson subdivision, DBY, page forty-eight, lot six and seven, X, book two twenty-eight, page one fifty-two, plus OR three thirty-three, page four ninety, and three twenty, I mean thirty twenty Building Avenue, Palaca, Florida, three two one seven seven, Simpson map book one, page one one four, block two, part of lots one through eight, including official records, two twenty-three, page four sixty, plus fifty foot of lots four and five, part of closed third street, official records, two thirty-nine, page six sixty, block three, lots one, two, seven, and eight, plus each twenty foot of lots three and six, providing for severability, providing for scrip or there is, and providing for an effective date.
There's a motion on the floor, and a second, we're now open the floor for public hearing, is there anyone here for public hearing? Is there anything in YouTube chat?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Public hearing, is there any further discussion from the commission? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on, trying to get in there, public hearing ordinance, amendment, future land use map from Commercial COM to Residential Light RL and rezoning from Commercial Intensive C2 to Residential Light R1, case PB twenty-one dash fifteen, location of property, appraisers, parcel number forty-two ten twenty-seven, sixty-eight fifty, fifteen ninety, zero zero six zero, applicant Thomas and Cynthia Lewis, first reading. Item A, future land use map amendment ordinance twenty-one dash thirty-five.
An ordinance to the City of Palaca, Florida, providing the future land use map of the adopted comprehensive plan. Be amended with respect to the following parcel of land, less than ten acres in size, from Commercial COM to Residential Light RL, future land use for the following property, property rate, forty-two ten, twenty-seven, sixty-eight fifty, fifteen ninety, zero zero six zero, six map of Palaca, map book two, page forty-six, block one fifty-nine, north sixty-three feet of south one hundred twenty-six feet of block, block eight eight, page eighty-six, contiguous to the boundaries of the City of Palaca, Florida, and providing for scrip or there is, and providing for an effective date.
Second.
I'll put a motion on the floor by Commissioner McCaskill, second by Commissioner Jones, is there, now open the floor for public, public hearing, is there anyone here for public hearing? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing, is there any further discussion from the commission? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item B, rezoning ordinance.
An ordinance to the City of Palaca, Florida, providing the official zoning map of the City of Palaca, Florida, be amended from Commercial Intensive C2 to Residential Light R1, for the following property, property appraisers, forty-two ten, twenty-seven, sixty-eight fifty, fifteen ninety, uh, six of it, map of Palaca, map of two, page forty-six, block one fifty-nine, north sixty-three feet of south one hundred twenty-six feet of, of west, of west third, of block, book eighty-eight, page eighty-six, providing for severability, providing for scrip or there is, and providing for an effective date.
Omo, second.
There's a motion on the floor, and a second by Commissioner Campbell, is there enough for public hearing, is there anyone here for public hearing, using all three functions? Three eight six three two nine zero one hundred, extension zero, or YouTube chat? Is there anything in YouTube?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to emergency items, resolution number twenty twenty-one R ninety-seven, authorize an execution of grant agreement with FAA for taxi, taxiway A rehabilitation in an amount of one, one million two hundred thirty-three thousand fifty dollars. Uh, is there a motion to accept this as an emergency law?
I'm like, so move.
There's a motion on the floor, and a second, just for discussion purposes, this is because, uh, there's a time limitation on this item that will not, that will, that will end before our next meeting. So, is there any further discussion on this motion, seeing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now moving on to the item, will you read the caption for the resolution?
Resolution of the City of Palaca, Florida, authorizing the mayor and the acting city clerk to execute and assess the federal aviation administrative, uh, grant, uh, for physical year twenty twenty-one airport improvement program agreement for taxiway off of space two west section pavement, lighting drainage rehabilitation project, providing for scrip or there is.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Borum, second by Commissioner McCaskill, we're now open the floor for public hearing, is there any, is there anyone here for public hearing, using all three functions as previously mentioned? Seeing no one, we'll close public hearing, is there any further discussion on the motion? All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously, moving on, number eight, adopt resolution twenty twenty-one R ninety-eight, authorize execution of Lowe's one hundred hometowns grant program agreement in the amount of one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, this is an emergency item as well, I need a motion.
Has the rules.
Motion by Commissioner Jones, second by Commissioner Borum, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously, at this time, you read the caption for the resolution.
Resolution of the City of Palaca, Florida, um, for proving the execution of the Lowe's one hundred hometowns grant agreement in an amount of one hundred twenty-five thousand, providing for scrip or there is.
There's a motion on the floor, and a second, now open the floor for public hearing, is there anyone here for public hearing? Using all three forms, is there anything in the YouTube chat?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Seeing nothing, we'll close public hearing, any further discussion from the commission? All in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously, do we have any representatives from Lowe's on the line? Do we got, is Mr. Rowell on the line?
Good, good evening, commissioners, and good, uh, good evening, Mayor Hill, yes, I am here, as well as Wayne, obviously, and, uh, of course Jonathan, obviously, is here.
My favorite senior citizen, so again, so we, we have you both on the line, gentlemen, you ha- we just wanna say on behalf of the City of Palaca, Florida, that we are elated about getting the award, uh, to have, to be the grant recipient, but we are more than overwhelmed and just thankful that, that both of you saw fit to recommend the City of Palaca, Florida, uh, and nominate us. And so, we are, we're just glad at the amount of work that you guys put into it, the amount of thought, and there's not enough thank yous for us to give you at this time, and so, we are just delighted. And, uh, you have any comments?
Yeah, I'll, I'll keep this real brief, uh, first of all, a lot of recognition goes to, uh, to Wayne and to Jonathan and to, uh, to the school district, uh, because a lot of the, uh, the work and the presentation really came from them. Uh, the recommendation idea just kinda came from me, and then how we were gonna plan out to, uh, to push this forward and to, to get in front of the right, uh, channels, uh, within the organization. We're very fortunate, because there was only three cities selected in the state of Florida, uh, and there was quite a few, uh, applications total, I think it was over a couple thousand applications into the project, and to, to make it into that final hundred, and, and to be one of those few stores here, obviously, in the state. Um, as of right now, uh, I'm actually waiting on a couple responses, uh, in regards to some of the more technical issues that, uh, we'll have to come across from a quoting standpoint, I'm reaching out to, uh, Neil Cooper with Florida Sound Systems, Commercial Sound System Engineering Company, uh, in Jacksonville, and I've got another, uh, company in Orlando I'm currently working with. And then also, I'm reaching out to James Johnson, uh, with PCI, who, uh, works for the Jacksonville Beach Amphitheater, uh, obviously, a, a little bit larger setup than we would have, but obviously, a lot of knowledge in the, uh, the industry. So, trying to find out some of those answers, 'cause that's some of the stuff, obviously, I don't think a lot of us have a lot of, uh, technical expertise in. We do have a meeting Monday at eight thirty, uh, to kinda discuss the next, uh, next, uh, ongoings, uh, and then we, we should have a general contractor, uh, meeting, I do believe, based off of who's being appointed with points of light, uh, and within, uh, the organization itself, uh, as to kinda those next steps, and how we will start, uh, planning the, uh, the process in regards to raw materials and things that Lowe's is gonna be actually providing, uh, through the stores as well, so.
Definitely, we appreciate it, Mr. McLean.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, um, and, uh, to just tag on to what Brian said, and to be very quick and to the point, we are also, uh, a group of us is also seeking some additional funding to augment the generous, uh, grant we got from Lowe's to really make this a state-of-the-art amphitheater that, uh, the community can be proud of. I did just wanted to very briefly mention, uh, the support of the city through, uh, the commissioners signing the letter, uh, way big in this, and so, I do wanna thank the commissioners and you, Mr. Mayor, for the continued, so appreciate it, then you know.
Definitely, Mr. McLean, we thank you as well, and we definitely appreciate all the work that's put in to make Palaca a better place to live. Any comments from the commission?
Oh, yeah, I mean, I guess, uh, you know, during three, you know, when you say over two thousand, two, um, two dollars. Yeah, the list is, uh, as, nominated, and, um, I can't, I can't speak enough about it, but I wanna thank all the people, again, as the mayor, and, uh, Echo, which, you know, man, but it's all, all the help, um, you know, the retirees, the seniors, veterans, and all the people on the streets and more, just, I think, all was involved, and I see there, see, some kind of food business, uh, why he's playing, he always does well, uh, Jonathan with the tremendous work that he continues to do to go around grants, um, and Lowe's, and we're all, and I'm gonna need representatives of Lowe's, so we can't thank you guys enough for helping us, Palaca, and helping us to step up too.
Um, I would like to, I would like to say, you, I feel. Commissioner again, Commissioner McCaskill, then I'll come back to you.
Just to echo the fact that Commissioner Borum, um, he called out the two players who they call wisdom. We just can't thank you guys, and, uh, um, just to, to be in the running and, and I can say, to be, uh, nominated, uh, considered and then selected is goes beyond, um, a celebration or a pre-regulatory, congratulations and thanks. So, thank you all so much for the opportunity. I can't, I just can't get into, um, the words to do that.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell.
I too echo the sentiments of, uh, Commissioner Borum as well as Commissioner McCaskill. Um, definitely thank you to, um, to Lowe's. That's just one additional thing that's going to make us, uh, shine, the gem of the city shine. And it's going to make our, um, river, our riverfront just that much more family friendly. Um, so again, thank you to everyone that's involved and I look forward to this project taking its place.
Any other comments? Seeing that, um, and just again, thank you gentlemen for, for your hard work. And we look forward to, we look forward to getting a chance to enjoy it all. And thank you to staff as well and Mr. Griffin for your work on this project.
Don't forget Miss Pucker too. She put a lot of work in.
Yeah, absolutely.
Definitely. And, um, we'd be remiss not to thank her as well. Next up is our city manager and administrator reports. We are in, we are in today's o'clock hour. Mr. Holmes, you're up.
Brief, we, uh, received an initial draft of the salary and compensation study on Monday. We've met multiple times by Zoom with, uh, Mr., uh, with Tom from Rewards, the president and CEO. Multiple phone conversations, all in an effort to try to make the data and the comparisons more accurate. Uh, we expect the final report tomorrow. When I say more accurate, I'm talking about defining the peer group that was used for comparison purposes and also attempting to, uh, separate out the jobs that were of like kind across the, uh, different peer group spectrum compared to those that might not be because of differences in responsibility and scope, uh, key to the budgets of the organizations and or the number of citizens being served. Uh, been a many hour process with staff and the reward group in attempting to refine that to make it as accurate as possible. And, uh, we expect the results of the first draft, the draft, the final draft tomorrow. I'll be, I'll be, uh, sending that out to all the commissioners and then, uh, uh, from there you can work that into our, um, our plans and, uh, consideration of how to address or how you're going to address the, uh, or if you're going to address the salary, uh, salary and wage issue. Have nothing further.
Nothing else. Moving on to our department heads. I can't see my list. Uh, chief. So I, I think we have Mr. Forsyth here for Chief Shaw. I'll go to, um. Captain Forsyth, you got anything?
No, I'm pretty sure.
Okay. Uh, Chief Taylor.
Nothing tonight, sir.
Mr. Yule.
Nothing, sir. Happy to thank you for taking up that, uh, application on an emergency basis. Uh, we got, we got short hopped by the FAA and, uh, thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Mr. Krantz. Ms. Thomas.
Nothing at this time, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jones.
Nothing at this time.
Ms. Walsh.
Not at this time, sir.
Uh, Ms. Shake.
I am all set for the evening. Thank you so much.
I think, I think that's everybody. Uh, Commissioner Campbell, let you go first.
I have nothing tonight, sir.
Mr. Jones.
Nothing at this time, sir.
Commissioner Borum.
All right, guys. And we just want to thank the staff for, um, the very hard work that they put in and the dedication they put in for the work, just for holding separation. Um, for, uh, doing very important and, um, also the amount of work that they put in for the salary survey. Among other things, I want to thank the city manager and all the department heads for that and, uh, again, uh, thank you guys for all of that. Uh, well, also, now, since, you know, our prayers to, uh, first side, uh, communities, um, they're still putting their lives together down there, just again, so just going to continue to embrace that community. Uh, other than that, that's all I have and, and for the time.
I know, Mr. Kurt Wright, who's here on?
Mr. Kurt Wright asked permission to leave because of a family issue. Uh, I think you understand where Mr. Kurt Wright is today. Mr. Mayor and I advised him that, um, that we would, uh, I'd cover for him if there was a question.
Okay.
I would say that he did send us an email with an update.
Okay. And. I'm gonna, looks like I'm gonna forego my comments for tonight with, again, we're moving forward. We have a lot of annexations in place. Um, this, we're, we're making progress. And so. Commissioner McCaskill, I don't think she had any comments for us tonight. With that being said, we are going to stand in adjournment. And we look forward to seeing you very soon for our workshop.